Alright, we want to welcome y'all to another session of Spiritual Beings Bible Study. This week, we're looking at the Angel of the Lord. In the Bible, Yahweh is, and we've gotten over this, Yahweh is portrayed as the transcendent Creator, who is other and above all, but also present and accessible within every part of his creation. There are some occasions where the biblical authors describe Yahweh's presence as a direct appearance in rather bold language. So listen to Genesis 17. "Now when Abram was ninety-nine years old, Yahweh appeared to Abram and spoke to him." Or look at First Samuel 3. "And Yahweh appeared again at Shiloh, because Yahweh revealed himself to Samuel at Shiloh by the word of the Lord." On other occasions, Yahweh will send a third-party messenger, who can be either human, that is, a prophet, or a spiritual being, what we call an angel. So look at Second Chronicles 36. "The Lord, the God of their fathers, sent word to them again and again by his messengers, because he had compassion on his people and on his dwelling place. But they continually mocked the messengers of God, despised his words, and scoffed at his prophets, till the wrath of the Lord rose against his people, until there was no remedy." So, here's a human, a prophet, relaying the word of God. Or look at Genesis 19. "Now two angels came to Sodom in evening, as Lot was sitting in the gate of Sodom." And here we have a spiritual being, an angel, relaying a message on behalf of God. There are many occasions where a figure called the Messenger/Angel of Yahweh appears. Now remember, last week, we talked about angels. An angel means messenger. So, this being can be called either the Messenger or the Angel of Yahweh, or the Angel of the Lord. These occasions are packed with puzzling, and it should read, "Features," that are not here by accident. All of these stories are coordinated and focused on the core paradox that can be summarized in this way. The Angel of the Lord is both Yahweh and distinct from Yahweh at the same time. And we'll explore this in a little bit later. Here's some of the key, a list of appearances of the Angel of Yahweh and the main characters in each story. When we were going over our homework, Eloise and Joanne and others also mentioned some of these figures. So Genesis 16, we have Hagar, the Egyptian, encountering the Angel of the Lord. Genesis 22, we have Abraham and Isaac encountering the Angel of the Lord. In Exodus 3, we have Moses encountering this person. Balaam encounters him in Numbers. In Judges 6, we have Gideon encountering him. Judges 13, we have Samson's parents. First Kings, we have Elijah. Zechariah, we have Zechariah. And First Chronicles, we have David. So a lot of people encounter this being. Now, if you read these stories carefully, you'll notice a pattern with them. The narrator, who's writing this book, the narrator switches back and forth between various divine titles in a way that blurs the identity of the speaker. Click at Genesis 16 with Hagar's experience. "Now the angel of Yahweh found Hagar by a spring of water in the wilderness, by the spring on the way to Shur. And he said, 'Hagar, Sarai's maid, where have you come from and where are you going?' And she said, 'I am fleeing from the presence of my mistress Sarai.' Then the angel of Yahweh said to her, 'Return to your mistress and submit yourself to her authority.' And the angel of Yahweh said to her, 'I will greatly multiply your descendants, so that they will be too many to count.' And the angel of Yahweh said to her, 'Behold, you are with child, and you will bear son, and you shall call his name Ishmael, because Yahweh has given heed to your affliction.' And she called the name of Yahweh who spoke to her, 'You are God who sees; for she said, 'Have I even remained alive here after seeing him?'" So, in this story right here, the narrator calls the figure, the Angel of Yahweh, as though he is distant, excuse me, as though he is distinct from Yahweh. The angel can refer to Yahweh as a distinct being, Yahweh has given heed, but also as if he is Yahweh, "I will greatly multiply." The narrator at the end tells us that it was Yahweh who spoke to Hagar. And in Hagar's speech, she calls this being God, which we see in the Greek, excuse me, which we see in the Hebrew as Elohim. So if you examine one of these stories, you might be tempted to think this story is either confused, or it's a patchwork of different sources, they're not in harmony with one another. And these are some conclusions offered by some scholars in the past. But what's interesting is this blurring between the Angel of the Lord and Yahweh appears in other stories when the Angel of Yahweh shows up. Let's look at Exodus 3. This is one of my favorite passages. I grew up on the Prince of Egypt. I think that's a beautiful scene where Moses encounters Yahweh. But when we read Exodus 3, see how this, how the distinction between Yahweh and the Angel of the Lord is addressed, how there's this shuffling between both titles. "The angel of the Lord appeared to Moses in a blazing fire from the midst of a bush; and he looked, and behold, the bush was burning with fire, yet the bush was not consumed. So Moses said, 'I must turn aside now and see this marvelous sight, why the bush is not burned up.' When Yahweh saw that he turned aside to look, God called to him from the midst of the bush and said, 'Moses, Moses!' And he said, 'Here I am.' And he said, 'Do not come near here; remove your sandals from your feet, for the place on which you are standing is holy ground.' And he said, 'I am the God of your father, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob.' Then Moses hid his face, where he was afraid to look at God." The narrator calls this figure the Angel of Yahweh, as though he is distinct from Yahweh. But then he's called Yahweh, and then immediately called God. So this figure speaks as though he is Yahweh God, and that is who Moses understands him to be. Here's some, here's another example with Gideon. And this is kind of a longer passage, but just hold on with me and see how the Angel of the Lord and Yahweh and God, how these titles are interchangeable in these stories. So look at the passage from, this is from Judges with Gideon. "Then the angel of Yahweh came and sat under the oak that was in Oprah, which belonged to Joash the Ebershrite, as his son Gideon was beating out the wheat in the winepress, and ordered to save it for the Midianites. The angel of Yahweh appeared to him and said to him, 'Yahweh is with you, O valiant warrior.' Then Gideon said to him, 'O my Lord, if Yahweh is with us, why then has all this happened to us? And where are all his miracles, which our fathers told us about, saying, 'Did not the Lord bring us up from Egypt? But now Yahweh has abandoned us and given us into the hand of Midian.' Yahweh looked at him and said, 'Go in this your strength, and deliver Israel from the hand of the Midians. Have I not sent you?' He said to him, 'O Lord, how shall I deliver Israel? Behold, my family is the least in Manasseh, and I am the youngest in my father's house.' But Yahweh said to him, 'Surely I will be with you, and you shall defeat Midian as one man.' So Gideon said to him, 'If now I have found favor in your sight, then show me a sign that it is you who speak with me. Please do not depart from here until I come back to you, bring out my offering and lay it before you.' And he said, 'I will remain until you return.' And Gideon went in and prepared a young goat and unleavened bread from an ephah of flour. He put the meat in a basket, and the broth in a pot, and brought them out to him under the oak and presented him. The angel of God said to him, 'Take the meat and the unleavened bread, and lay them on this rock, and pour out the broth.' And he did so. Then the angel of Yahweh put out the end of the staff that was in his hand, and touched the meat on the unleavened bread, and a fire sprang up from the rock, and consumed the meat and unleavened bread. Then the angel of the Lord vanished from his sight. When Gideon saw that he was the Angel of the Lord, he said, 'Alas, O Yahweh God, for now I have seen the angel of the Lord face to face.' Yahweh said to him, 'Peace to you; do not fear; you shall not die.' Then Gideon built an altar there to Yahweh, and named it Yahweh is Peace.' And this comes from Judges, Chapter 6. So here we have a very sophisticated story, but the narrator expects that the reader has been tracking in all the previous stories of the Angel of Yahweh's appearances. So here, in this story, we see the blurring of identities is heightened to an extreme. So the Angel of Yahweh, Yahweh, and God are all interchanged in this story from Judges. And this is especially noticeable in the final scene where the Angel of Yahweh departs. But then in 6:23, Yahweh is apparently still standing there talking to Gideon. So the most reasonable conclusion to draw from these stories, and there are many more, is that the blurring, this blurring of identities between Yahweh and the Angel of Yahweh is an intentional strategy aimed at making a profound theological claim about the identity of Yahweh. In layman's terms, the God of Israel is a complex unity, who is both transcendent and above all, yet simultaneously present and accessible within creation through a mediating person who is both Yahweh and distinct from Yahweh. The next section is the identity of the Angel of Yahweh in other scriptural text. So the stories we explored previously are making this sophisticated claim about the God of the Bible through narrative exposition, through stories. That's what narrative exposition means. So this is normal for the Old Testament, for the Hebrew scriptures. So the biblical authors make their heavy-duty theological claim by means of narrative strategies through stories, okay? And this forces readers to draw conclusions and explore the implications, kind of like how we just had with our question time, there was some assertions of, well, Pastor Jared, this kind of reminds me of the Trinity, does this link to the Trinity? And that's outside of our study, but that's a good, that's a good question, though. You know, the authors want us to explore who God is. They're challenging us. So a perfect example is found throughout the Book of Exodus. Here we find a clear set of hyperlink stories that connect the Angel of Yahweh in the burning bush with the pillar of cloud and fire that guarded the Israelites in the wilderness, and with the glory of Yahweh that fills the tabernacle, the temple. So when we read, we're going to read a bunch of text. And I want you all to pay attention to all the titles and the images that you hear and see. So think of images such as clouds, fires, pillars, and different titles. The Angel of the Lord, Yahweh, God. Okay, and we're going to see how these are connected to the Angel of Yahweh and to Yahweh himself. And we'll see this through the underlying text, but just explore these stories with me. So we got Exodus 3. "The angel of Yahweh appeared to Moses in a blazing fire from the midst of a bush; and he looked, and behold, the bush was burning with fire, yet the bush was not consumed." Or look at Exodus 13. "Then the Israelites set out from Succoth and camped in Athem at the edge of the wilderness. Yahweh was going before them in a pillar of cloud by day, to lead them on the way, and in a pillar of flower, not pillar of flower, a pillar of fire by night, to give them light, that they might travel by day and by night." Look at Exodus 16. "Then Moses said to Aaron, 'Say to all the congregation of the sons of Israel, 'Come near before Yahweh, for he has heard your grumblings.' It came about, as Aaron spoke to the whole congregation of the sons of Israel, that they looked toward the wilderness, and behold, the glory of Yahweh appeared in a cloud." Look at Exodus 14. "The angel of the Lord, who had been going before the camp of Israel, moved and went behind them, and a pillar of cloud moved from before them and stood before them, excuse me, and stood behind them. And it came between the camp of Egypt and the camp of Israel, and there was a cloud along with the darkness, yet gave light at night; thus the one who did not come near the other all night." Look at Exodus 19. "Now Mount Sinai was in all smoke, because Yahweh descended upon it in fire; and its smoke ascended like the smoke of a furnace, and the whole mountain quaked violently. When the sound of the trumpet grew louder and louder, Moses spoke, and God answered him with thunder. Yahweh came down on Mount Sinai to the top of the mountain, and Yahweh called Moses to the top of the mountain, and Moses went up." Look at Exodus 23. "Behold, I am going to send an angel before you, to guard you along the way, and to bring you into the place which I prepared. Be on your guard before him, and obey his voice; do not be rebellious toward him, for he will not pardon your transgression, since my name is in him." Look at Exodus 24. "The glory of Yahweh rested on Mount Sinai, and the cloud covered it for six days; and on the seventh day he called to Moses from the midst of the cloud; and to the eyes of the sons of Israel the appearance of the glory of Yahweh was like a consuming fire on the mountaintop. Moses entered the midst of the cloud, as he went up to the mountain; and then Moses was on the mountain forty days and forty nights." Look at Exodus 40. "Then the cloud covered the tent of meeting, and the glory of Yahweh filled the tabernacle. Moses was not able to enter the tent of meeting, because the cloud had settled on it; and the glory of Yahweh filled the tabernacle. Throughout all their journeys, whenever the cloud was taken up from over the tabernacle, the sons of Israel would set out; but if the cloud had not taken up, then they did not set out until the day when it had taken up. For throughout all their journeys, the cloud of Yahweh was on the tabernacle by day, and there was fire in it by night, in the sight of all the house of Israel." So, from these various texts in Exodus, we see how there's a collage of images associated with the divine presence of God. And this develops and grows throughout the story of Exodus, and how both are progressively associated with the Angel of Yahweh and with Yahweh. So the Angel of Yahweh, we have descriptions of fire in Exodus 3, descriptions of cloud Exodus 13, and one who was a guide for Israel in Exodus 23. For Yahweh, we have images of a pillar of cloud, fire, and glory in Exodus 14 and 16. We have an image of fire in Exodus 19, glory of Yahweh as cloud Exodus 24, and the glory of Yahweh over the tabernacle that guides Israel in Exodus 40. So this network of images, this collage, is very important, because it fits the same patterns and ideas that we saw in the Angel of Yahweh stories above. The ones with Gideon, the stories with Hagar, the stories with all those other figures, which you can explore on your own and see these descriptions. So there is a deliberative narrative strategy to portray Yahweh as a complex unity, so that the Angel of Yahweh is both Yahweh and distinct from Yahweh at the same time. Our next section is entitled, "The Divine Glory in a Tabernacle and a Temple." So we notice how the stories in Exodus, the section we just covered, listed above, the associations of the Angel of Yahweh with the glory and fire and the cloud of Yahweh that guided Israel in the wilderness, peered on the top of the Mount Sinai, and then finally took up residence with the people over the tabernacle. But we must now connect these stories from Exodus with the later experiences of the biblical prophets, who had visions and encounters with this same glorious presence. So we're going to explore some of these in our notes from our previous Bible studies on the Divine Council, where we use some of the scriptures to see some of the images that describe Yahweh. Now here are a few examples. Here's Exodus 24. "Then Moses went up with Aaron, the dab, and Abihu, and seventy of the elders of Israel, and they saw the God of Israel. And under his feet there appeared to be a pavement of blue sapphire, as clear as the sky itself; yet he did not stretch out his hand against the nobles of the sons of Israel; and they saw God, and they ate and drank." Look at First Kings. "Machias said, 'Therefore hear the word of the Lord: I saw the Lord sitting on his throne, and all the hosts of heaven standing by him on his right and on his left.'" Listen to Isaiah 6. "In the year of King Uzziah's death, I saw Yahweh sitting on a throne, lofty and exalted, with the train of his robe filling the temple. Seraphim stood above him, each having six wings; with two he covered his face, and with two he covered his feet, and with two he flew. One called, excuse me, and one called out to another, and said, 'Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts; the whole earth is full of his glory.' And the foundations of the thresholds trembled at the voice of him who called out, while the temple was filling with smoke." Or look at Ezekiel, Chapter 1. "Now above the pavement that was over their heads, there was something resembling a throne, like blue sapphire in appearance; and on that which resembled the throne high up was a figure with the appearance of a human. Then I noticed from the appearance of his loins and the upward, something like glowing metal that looked like fire, all around within it. From the appearance of his loins and downward, I saw something like fire, and a radiance around him. As the appearance of the rainbow in the clouds on a rainy day, so was the appearance of the surrounding radiance; such was the appearance of the likeness of the glory of Yahweh." So all of these thrown visions from these prophets of Yahweh, all of these thrown visions of Yahweh, surrounded by his heavenly host, are coordinated. And they're working off the same basic set of ideas. Yahweh is the king of all creation and rules from his heavenly temple with the stars, the host of heaven, you know, the Divine Council, all that, as symbolic servants that reflect Yahweh's glory. So when it comes to the figure sitting on the throne, these visions are clear that it is Yahweh, the God of Israel, who is above all and truly other, the Creator and Sustainer of all reality. However, we also have to remember all of the other callbacks, all the other hyperlinks between the stories of the glory-fire-cloud of Yahweh in Exodus and the Angel of Yahweh. The whole point of these connections was to make clear that the human-looking angel of Yahweh is the glorious being that Moses and the prophets encountered in their visions of the heavenly temple. Remember, the Angel of Yahweh is both Yahweh and distinct from Yahweh. And it is this visible Yahweh sitting on a throne that the prophets are experiencing. So the glorious enthroned Yahweh is the Angel of Yahweh, who is both Yahweh and distinct from Yahweh at the same time. So this is the robust portrait of God that pervades the entire Hebrew Bible, the Old Testament, and it provides a crucial key for understanding how the New Testament makes its claims about the identity of Jesus of Nazareth. So the New Testament's portrayal of Jesus, these texts we just discussed about the Angel of Yahweh in the Hebrew Bible are the key scriptural foundation for the New Testament's claims about Jesus as the human incarnation of the God of Israel. So consider the opening of the Gospel of John, Chapter 1. "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. He was in the beginning with God; all things came into being through Him; and apart from Him nothing came into being that has come into being." So there are many amazing things in this, in these few short verses right here. But the key point for our discussion is the portrayal of the pre-human Jesus. He is described as a being who's both God and distinct from God at the same time. So John is drawing upon the scriptural categories provided him by the character of the Angel of Yahweh in the Hebrew scriptures. So this concept also helps us make sense of an important text later in the Gospel of John, Chapter 12. "So Jesus said to them, 'For a little while longer the light is among you; walk while you have the light, so that the darkness will not overtake you. He who walks in the darkness does not know where he goes; while you have the light, believe in the light, so that you may become sons of light.' These things Jesus spoke, and he went away and hid himself from them; but though he had performed so many signs before them, yet they were not believing in him. This was to fulfill the word of Isaiah the prophet, which he spoke. 'Lord, who has believed on report, and to whom has the arm of the Lord been revealed? For this reason they could not believe; for Isaiah said once again, 'He has blinded their eyes, and he has hardened their hearts, so that they would not see with their eyes and perceive with their heart, and be converted, and I heal them.' These things Isaiah said, because he saw the glory, and he spoke of him." So in this passage, Jesus is emphasizing that there are many leaders in Jerusalem who are rejecting him, and they do not believe him. And even though they saw the signs and the miracles and the wonders, even though they saw the raising of Lazarus from the dead in the previous chapter, but then John says that this rejection is not a surprise. It's actually what was expected to happen based on the depiction of a rebellious Israel found in the Book of Isaiah, where Yahweh said that Israel was blind and deaf. So we can see that John, in Chapter 12, in this last paragraph, that John is referencing Isaiah 6. And in Isaiah 6, we see Isaiah seeing Yahweh elevated on his heavenly throne. So when John, in Chapter 12, verse 41, says that Isaiah saw his glory, he's speaking about Jesus as Yahweh. His claim is bold and direct. Isaiah encountered the pre-incarnate Jesus as Yahweh. Let's continue onwards to our last section for today. So why isn't Jesus called the Angel of Yahweh in the New Testament? So from the previous section, it's clear that the apostles believe that Yahweh in the Hebrew Bible is the same being who they meet in the person of Jesus. And if the Hebrew Bible portrays the Angel of Yahweh as Yahweh, as God, why didn't the apostles ever use the phrase, "The Angel of Yahweh"? And we have, the first response to this is, the apostles do use imagery and conceptual categories of the Angel of Yahweh to describe Jesus. They use imagery of the Angel of Yahweh to describe Jesus. So Yahweh's and the Angel of Yahweh's enthroned glory in the temple from Isaiah 6 is quoted in John 14, and it's applied to Jesus. In just the previous section, we saw this being used. We also see Yahweh's enthroned, human-like appearance seen by Moses on Mount Sinai from Exodus 24 is used to portray Jesus's transformation into a glowing royal king on the mountain from various Gospels. And what do we call this event? The Transfiguration. So, food for thought. Our second response. The apostles quote the text in the Hebrew scriptures that are about the Angel of Yahweh, and they do apply them to Jesus. Look at Jude, verses 4 and 5. "For certain individuals, whose condemnation was written about long ago, have secretly slipped in among y'all. They are ungodly people, who pervert the grace of our God into a license for immorality, and deny Jesus Christ our only Master and Lord. Though you all already know all this, I want to remind you that the Lord at one time delivered his people out of Egypt." So notice that Jude calls Jesus Lord, and then describes him as the Lord who delivered the Israelites out of Egypt. Recall that the Exodus story says that the God who rescued the Israelites was both Yahweh in Exodus 14, and the Angel of Yahweh expressed in Exodus 13. Third response. While the apostles used the biblical categories provided by the Angel of Yahweh, they did not use the phrase, "Angel of the Lord", and for a fairly obvious reason. They wanted to avoid any idea that Jesus was merely an angel. Angels are remarkable beings, but they are creatures, that is, created beings whose existence is sustained by their creator. So we know from our theology, our understanding of God, from John one, that in the beginning was the Word, and the Word was God. God the Father didn't create Jesus. The Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit, they were always there. Beginning of time, through present time, at the end of time, they'll always be there. So the apostles didn't want to use this phrase to merely describe Jesus as an angel, because he wasn't just a mere angel. So it's clear that the apostles want to make a more exalted claim about Jesus. He isn't a high-ranking official who came among us. Rather, he is the one and the only Yahweh become a human being. "In the past, God spoke to our ancestors through the prophets at many times in various ways; but in these last days he has spoken to us by the Son, whom he appointed heir of all things, and though whom also he made the universe. The Son is the radiance of God's glory and the exact representation of his being, sustaining all things by his powerful word. After he had provided purification for sins, he sat down at the right hand of the majesty in heaven. So he became as much superior to the angels as the name he has inherited is superior to theirs." So remember in Exodus twenty-three, "Yahweh sent my messenger, because my name is in him." So the angel of Yahweh is not an angel. I'm sorry, Joanne. It's not, it's not Michael, it's not Gabriel. But the angel of Yahweh is the very personal presence of the creator God in human appearance. The author of Hebrews is claiming that Jesus is that divine person who is both God and distinct from God, and who has become human in the person of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. So the angel of Yahweh is God appearing as human, while Jesus is God become human. There are many mysteries that remain, but the above summary is a helpful way to put all of these pieces together. All right, if not, I just want to thank you all for joining us for this session, and we'll see y'all later.